I would like to call to order the Norton School Committee meeting for Thursday, October 29th, 2020. So we will start with the minutes of October 15th and October 17th, 2020, open meetings. Dr. Byetta, can we vote on those together or separate? Okay, so let's do the minutes of October 15th first. Any questions or comments? No. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes of October 15th?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Sherry?
Yes.
Kathleen?
I have to abstain.
Who said? Dan?
Yes.
And Dinesh?
Yes.
And Carolyn? Yes. Thanks.
4:01.
The minute of October 17th, any comments? Questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes of October 17th, 2020?
So moved.
Second?
Again.
All in favor? Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Shane?
Carolyn is a yes. Thank you.
Are we intending to approve these other minutes as well today?
The ones that came in our booklet?
Yeah.
I think those are just to sign.
Okay.
Those are for your review and then we'll set up a meeting just to take care of all those minutes.
Should we just throw them down?
Uh, no, because we're not ready to, because we haven't gone through. We were asking for you folks to send Terry any changes to then be brought up at a future meeting to actually vote on. Because there were so many of them.
I went through them and there are no changes from me, I can tell you right now, so.
And I didn't see any changes from me. I actually thought that they were just...
Yeah, we can't take a vote on the minutes because they're not on the agenda. So we'll have to, I'll make sure they're packaged for the next meeting.
Okay. Um, Sherry, warrants?
I reviewed and approved the following warrants for October 16th, 2020. I wish to enter them into public record.
Thank you. Um, so we're gonna move to our student rep...
This meeting is being recorded.
Sorry. Continue. Um, to our student representatives' updates. So I see Malia and Zoe. Hi. Hi, Malia.
So, sorry, we're really missing out that the ripples are actually on here. So we were going to share what they had sent in the email, but I'm guessing that they're intending to, you know, present their information themselves. Is that correct?
No, you can, um...
I think Zoe is just doing the JCS.
Hi, alright, so, um, we heard that the JCS, the kids are actually like super excited to be, um, uh, learning and like everything's pretty much kind of back to normal, I guess. That's what we're kind of hearing, not like normal, normal, but overall the happiness of whatever is all normal so far. And then I think, Malia, you've got the L.
So, um, for the L, a lot of positive stuff, which is great. One of my favorite things is that he said that, he will say that he loves seeing the students in the building and it makes his week to see them here. They're doing a sensational job of social distancing and also keeping their masks on. They're able to socialize, communicate, be with peers, and learn in a safe environment while getting that, say, in-person learning at least a few weeks, which is just, basically it's a lot about how we're still, we're still learning, we're still socializing and doing important with the, you know, precautions of the mask and stuff like that, but everyone is still able to, which is the most important part.
Um, for the middle school, we heard that lots of clubs are getting back together, like doing, um, virtual meetings and that's happening in the high school too, so that's kind of similar. And they're also being able to do more hands-on activities, so although it's like everything's separate, we're still, they are and we are in the high school, are still able to do like labs and activities that even though we're not like paper all the time, it's like still, they make it work. We sanitize everything and we still get the full experience, I feel like that. Um, they're saying that they're excited to celebrate Halloween and I know that for the high school, we had our Halloween first day, um, today, uh, which was kind of interesting. It was a little funny seeing all the costumes that they came up with today, but I won't tell you because Malia still hasn't gone into school yet, but it was definitely fun. They're still doing all the fun activities that we normally would and being able to experience all the fun parts that you like about high school, so I think it's going pretty well. It's a little scary knowing that Halloween's coming up and kids are gonna have parties because you know that's what kids do, as much as you say not to, it's definitely gonna happen, but hopefully not as bad. Hopefully it's not that, uh, worse than COVID and stuff, but I think overall, school's going pretty well.
I agree there. I think that it's definitely, the Halloween approaching is nerve-wracking, but I think so far, everyone's been doing really well. And people have made a lot of effort to, you know, keep doing well and keep wearing masks and waiting in lines and doing this and doing that. And hopefully we don't lose the next few coming weeks, but I think that's the, you know, the adjusting to the workload and stuff, I think everything's been pretty good.
Thanks for sharing updates. I think, um, we know that Halloween's a really fun time and it's just another one of those moments when we really have COVID fatigue. Um, I'm sure everybody got a reverse phone call from the Board of Health, kind of reminding us, um, as sort of Norton community members, just to be really thoughtful in the way we celebrate Halloween, but I'm glad that, you know, schools were able to kind of do that in a really sort of socially distant, um, safe way, so. Does anybody have any comments for our students? Was there anything from the LG?
So we actually, so we heard back from Mrs. Luke, but she would prefer not to state much, as she already talked, she said she'd already talked to Dr. Byetta about it and didn't want to be redundant, so that's why, sorry, that's why there's, uh, the LG is missing. And the high school, we also live together as well.
Thanks, Malia. Um, thanks, Zoe. So I...
Great, real quick, Joe, can you just reach out to all the principals and make sure that they're, um, they're getting back to the girls on, on what's happening, et cetera? Just, it seems like they're having trouble getting some responses from them.
Will do.
Appreciate it. Dr. Byetta, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Our next item on the agenda is the discussion on COVID-19 data and information.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Good evening, everybody, members of the administrative team and the general audience. And Shannon Taylor's also here tonight on behalf of the Norton Teachers Association. You know, it's really interesting to kind of go off of what our, uh, what Zoe and Malia said about, um, the idea that teaching and learning is still taking place and that, um, there's a different attempt on the day-to-day work that's taking place in the schools and that it looks different. But I think it's important to, to realize, um, what we're working with, um, in terms of information. Tonight, you all received as a citizen, if you registered, a call from the Norton Board of Health that in fact, as of 6:00 PM tonight, the town of Norton is in the red zone, um, for an increase and meeting the low end of the threshold as a, as a community. That means we're, I don't have the final numbers yet, but we would be at approximately 23 cases or more, uh, that are taking place over a two-week period. As was noted in the call, that's an uptick, uh, not drastic, but enough that I'm sure it's going to cause, uh, some stress. It makes currently no changes to the Norton Public Schools', um, model that we have going forward. We have, and we continue to have, and I don't know how much longer we will have, um, zero cases within our schools. We've had impact of staff members and families from others, but nothing directly where we had to report to the state, um, or to you folks of, of direct impact within our schools. As you know from an email that I communicated to all families, I have concerns about this weekend, uh, because it is Halloween, but as I always say, social distancing, wear your masks, take precautions, wash your hands, use sanitizer, um, and try to stay to minimal, if you will, crowds, a number of people as recommended, especially since it looks like Saturday morning, it's gonna be about 35, 40 degrees, so it's not necessarily the best weather to be outside unless you're throwing yourself off the slopes. So, um, when we look at this, uh, data and information, as Dinesh Savas, the Vice Chair of the Committee, reminds me all the time, this is very broad, 35,000 feet, um, if you will, data that we received from families, from students, um, more specifically even that the high school, even Dolman, our principal, shared the information from the high school with students. And, and then our administrators, and you have all of these as handouts that was provided to you, and I just wanted to go over a couple of things and, and then kind of open it up, if you don't mind. I think it's really important for us to take a look at, um, some of the data in terms of, um, how our students responded, um, throughout the district. And one of the key components, I think, of, um, throughout the district, the older students, six to 12, I think the, the, uh, the biggest component for me is that our students are just getting some of the, what I would call, and what I've been calling for the last week, momentum. The structures are more in place today than they were six weeks ago. The expectations are starting in some ways to level off and in another way, and by level off, I mean, oh, oh, too much work, we gotta slide back somewhat to the other end of it, which is, there's more expectations. The other part of it becomes, um, the accountability of the work. In other words, what we agreed to with the NTA would be the standards that we wanted to utilize and making sure that there's follow-through and that our staff, um, is, is doing these. The biggest concern and the hardest one to try to facilitate is two areas. One is everything to do with, for lack of a better phrase, lack, lack of technology expertise at the family center. In other words, mom, dad, the family, whatever that makeup is. Early on, there was a lot of, I'll call them hiccups, in trying to get on. Attendance was an issue, those types of topics that we were dealing with that slowly are becoming less and less every single day. The second part was students getting, getting onto the technology and all of a sudden, internet goes out, I can tell you as a person who has that happen in my home. The internet goes out for two seconds because there's too many people on, or there's too much going on, or something takes place. Those are two pieces of information that are important for us, because as we get into the winter season, it becomes even more and more concerning, um, and with respect to the community, um, you know, a slight snowstorm or windstorm and we lose all kinds of electricity within the community. The other part that, um, I thought was interesting, especially out of the high school, was about 71% of the students reporting that they were right around that four-to-five hour period of working on schoolwork. And that's exactly between synchronous and asynchronous where we're supposed to be, our teacher-directed or student-directed instruction, where this data's asked us to be on a day-to, um, today basis. There's no doubt that it's easier being in school physically with your colleagues or with your peers as a student, or with your colleagues as a teacher. It's more traditional in this way that we do business. Being at home and turning on a video, watching the video and then doing work, many of us are parents of children who are home completely by themselves for that entire period of time for their school day. What we're starting to see in the momentum is that some of the students' school days, early on, there was a bunch of students, both at the elementary level, middle school level, and the high school level, where you saw students finishing in an hour. Then you saw some groups of students finishing in three hours. Then you saw some students taking way too long. And we got the complaints from both sides, if you will. Not enough and too much. That's not an unusual circumstance that happens in a general education classroom on a day-to-day basis. The other part that I think was, um, interesting, um, from the parent's survey, was that in some ways, it aligns almost directly with the student survey. By the way, they were done at two very different times. The student survey was done a lot later than the, uh, than the parent survey that came from the central office. But what we see there are what I would call the hiccups. So as I informed a parent the other day, if something isn't being done, that's part of what we're supposed to be doing, we have to drill down, if you will, to the accountability standard that's required of that teacher and that support staff. It's that simple. Um, on the other side of it, we have people trying to get creative in how, how they're doing some of these things, which I'm happy to support. And it's not necessarily seen as the same thing of the agreement, if you will. Again, these are expectations and interpretations that are taking place between parents and the staff and even the building principal or, or my office. What I think is important, um, for us to get is, um, there were over 580 individual comments, many of them, most of them very positive, some of them very specific to their child's needs, um, but we feel comfortable that we're headed, um, in what I would call, um, the right direction. The other part of it that I think is important, uh, from the handouts that you provided, was the commentaries from the administrators. So these are the people on the ground and I asked them to put together some strengths and some challenges. And I think overall, from building, the building department to department, students making connections with teachers was probably the, one of the number-one comments that we see on the teacher survey, the student survey, the parent survey, and our own administrative staff, that being able to see each other and be together after not seeing each other since March has been a win-win, um, situation for all involved. The negative of that is also that you only get to see a percentage of your classroom and not your entire classroom. Many of our parents and students are like, yeah, it's great to see five of my peers, but I normally would have been in a class of 20, uh, not just eight or 10 or 15, whatever the class size that, that they're in. The other part of it is dealing with, um, any type of IEPs, 504s, ELLs, um, students that are homeless, students involved with DCF. That has become the core of some of our work in the last few weeks, not only because of meeting mandates from the state, but also because we are seeing, for example, um, an incident or a situation that just happened in the last few days, which is looking at students that are being truant, they're not coming to school. We can't stop from reporting truancy. We can't look the other way, we have to do it, we have to go to the courts, we have to follow the process in any shape or form that we would normally do it if we were just having a traditional school year. Why? Because that's in our best interest to do so as an institution. The other part that I think is, um, really important from some of the commentary that was made, is when you look at our challenges, those challenges are very much broken down into what the parents said, the teachers are saying, or you'll hear about some of the teacher comments, um, from Ms. Taylor, who's the NTA president, and then, um, the students as well, um, which is, there's this sense of students who are feeling, and I think we heard a few weeks ago from both Zoe and Malia, of there's a lot of work and we're trying to kind of establish Monday, the constant headache at the secondary level, specifically Mondays. How do we balance that more? Though it's not supposed to be being together for half a day and then spending another 10 hours completing work. So we have to find a balance from that. And I think, um, Principal Dolman, who's on with us tonight, has begun that process of collecting that data, sharing it out with the teachers, and asking for some, uh, if you will, more specificity on what requirements are for students to be doing at home, recognizing that one student, and I happen to be a father of a student in the district, um, on some days it may look like it's a six, seven-hour day, and some days it looks like it's a three-to-four-hour day. And there have been days it's looked less than that. So it depends on the type of work that's also being asked, um, of the students in the follow-up. And then lastly, um, one of the things that, as superintendent, I've tried to, um, put my fingers on over the last, I would say really three weeks of the six weeks, six weeks ends, ends tomorrow, and that is that where we were, where we are today versus six weeks ago is very different already, and that to me is a positive, um, situation. Second, what we're seeing, um, is more positives today than we actually even saw last week. And believe me, people are not shy about telling me about what's good and what's bad. We're getting, we continue, continuously are getting those communications. I think a core issue that I, I just want to say is, um, we have a great staff. We have, in my opinion, the best staff around. I've been around for 30 years and been a superintendent and I can tell you right now, this is a fantastic staff. They work hard. They are stressed. There's no doubt about it. They're stressed about the day-to-day, they're stressed about their own home life and their own family lives and who has COVID and who doesn't have COVID, and who do I have to worry about and how do I take care of my mom and dad? And maybe in the past, a lot of those things didn't come to work, but now they do. And they do because they're stressed about the health and safety of their own family. And my biggest concern going forward is significantly not the day-to-day of students, it is truly the day-to-day of staff. I've said it since the beginning, that my biggest concern is, um, the health and safety of students and the staff. The concern that I have is that we may have to shut down at some point because we don't have teachers here, because they're dealing with COVID situations with a child, a parent, their boyfriend, their girlfriend, their significant other, whatever the title may be, and they're going through 14 days, or they're going through testing, or they're going through those types of situations. What happens when you're a remote teacher and you're out on, um, on COVID because your spouse got COVID, your child got COVID, then you got COVID, and you're hoping that your other child doesn't get COVID? These are stresses that I can't control for the staff. My job is to try, to try to minimize, minimize the amount of stress as much as possible. And the balance of that is difficult, and I'll tell you why. For many, many years, many of you have heard me say a very simple phrase, "We can all put kids into a school, but if there isn't a, a teacher in front of them, it's a jail. It's not a school." We need teachers to be there. And so the more time we have away from students, the more time we're on video, the more time we're not live, the more loss we're gonna have. It's just that simple. That said, that's not, that's not a blame on the teachers or as individuals or collectively. We are dealing with a major world health crisis, which has turned into a red-blue fight, unfortunately, and put all of us in the middle of trying to figure out the healthiest and best way to move forward educating our kids. I think what we're doing right now, which is providing parents choice, remote or hybrid, is an appropriate approach. Moving to continue to have our high-needs list of students return, and high-needs, I want to talk about just briefly. When we say high-needs, that does not mean special needs. Special needs are special education, not special needs is the right frame of word, is a specific group of students under an IDEA. A high-needs group includes poverty, homelessness, DCF, um, special education, 504, ELL, and so on and so on and so on. What happens to a student that's never been suicidal? What happens to a student that's never not been engaged and all of a sudden is failing their classes or not participating in school? That becomes a high-needs student for us. They could have been an honor roll student last year and ranked number two in the class, and today they're failing miserably and they become a high-needs student. I just want to make sure that we don't start to think it's just a group. It is a wide variety group that's involved when we say high-needs. And then we have to prioritize those needs, unfortunately, based on health and safety requirements and transitioning that in a, in a way that is safe for the students already in the classroom and the teachers and staff that's working in those classrooms. And that's a process. That's a health and safety process. It's not just call the kid today, bring him in tomorrow. It's a process that we have to try to utilize. There's always circumstances that cause a curveball, I can assure you of that, but the premise of the argument is never to say, well, let's just bring these 50 kids in tomorrow. It's a process to get there because of, of health and safety. So my recommendation to you folks is for us to continue in the hybrid model, specifically also because we have entered into another zone. That zone is not related to Wheaton College, I want to reframe that again. That is not related to Wheaton College. This is a cluster situation, very small, get-together group, if you will. I can't get any deeper than that without really being inappropriate, that's causing it. There are no cases within our school system. The amount of EPP and situations, I believe, is appropriate. It is not perfect. It is not perfect. There are children in certain areas that it's more difficult around safety and being safe for our adults and for them. We do have children that don't wear masks or visors per medical and/or behavioral situations. We have staff who wear visors and not masks because of their own medical situations. So, um, big picture, is it perfect? No. Are people attempting and trying to get there on a daily basis? I believe so. And where we're not, I've informed the administration, I've informed the school committee, and I've informed parents. If it's not going the way it's supposed to be going, then inform us. I think my staff is not needing another email that says, "Please remind yourselves to do X, Y, Z." They're, 99% of them are doing it. And I, I believe in that type of accountability and holding people accountable that way, and I believe that's the, the best way to be able to do it. The only other thing that, that is, um, connected to this, um, are the things that are beyond some of our control, right? The things that I can't really control as a district. I can't control your increase in, 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 in becoming a red community, uh, especially since it's got no connection to the Norton Public Schools. If anything, but what that tells you is that our parents and our families and our teachers and our students are doing a great job. And I'd also probably support some of the research out there, um, about students in schools, or it's pretty safe. And I think utilizing the safety precautions we've utilized, thanks to your support, um, has allowed for us to be able to move in the right direction. And then I'll leave you with, uh, two thoughts. One, we're over 150,000 meals served by the Norton Food Services and Chartwell's department, um, since March. Just want you to think about what that means. 150,000 meals. At no cost to the local taxpayer. And, uh, the rest of this year, sorry, that's my, uh, wonderful, uh, class, uh, office here. And the second one is we can't do it, uh, not only with all of the wonderful teacher support staff and all of that, but there's another group of people that get left out, and that is how much our men and women in the custodial department have done every single day to make sure that they're hitting every spot. So I'll give you an example, when we had a situation at the LGM the other day, where a student, uh, may have had it and they went home right away, by the way, it was negative. We, kids have moved out, teachers have moved out, full cleaning takes place, filters are cleaned out, that's what we did in order to make sure that the next day, everybody felt safe coming back in. So it's kudos to those guys and women, it's men and women in our department, um, for, um, doing the job, uh, that, that they're currently doing. And I'll defer, Madam Chair, the rest to you.
Thanks, Dr. Byetta. That was, um, a lot of information, so, um, everybody can kind of take a few minutes to take it in. Jen, can I just ask, um, was the plan, if there is public comment, to use the, um, Q&amp;A or the chat? Which one would you?
Um, I would recommend, um, having people put any comments or questions into the Q&amp;A, because as we go through, we can mark them as answered, and it's just an easier way to keep track of things. It sometimes can get difficult in the chat box to keep up with where we're at.
So if, um, all in attendance, if you have any questions or comments, if you could put those into the Q&amp;A, we will be sort of watching that as we go. If I could just sort of follow up on what you shared, Dr. Byetta, I think, um, we had made the decision early on that when we started this kind of hybrid model, that we would do our check-in in six weeks, and I'm not sure about anybody else, but it feels like a pretty quick six weeks. I think when we're living in, um, a stress response, which is basically what every single person, um, currently in the world is doing, we're living in a, a stress response that we can't really, um, end or get out of. I think it really changes the dynamic in so many ways, and I think one of the things that happens is that, um, we go through our days, but we kind of don't necessarily always enjoy them. So I want to just kind of share what's been happening behind the scenes, so that everybody is aware, our families are aware, our staff is aware, um, the multiple conversations that have been happening, and I just want to do a quick shout-out. I don't know if we could have ever been as lucky as, um, we are currently to have the President of the NTA, Shannon Taylor, be so accommodating to have conversations with us, to, um, really sort of advocate on behalf of our Norton staff. Certainly, there's a lot of people who are in the process of really trying to find out, um, the best data we can, and I think what Dinesh says is that sometimes the data doesn't really prove much when we don't know sort of those really intricacies of the information, but we're trying to kind of compile a lot of information to make, um, a really educated decision on how we move forward. And I think, Dr. Byetta, I did hear you say that we move forward as we are, we kind of stay... We kind of stay the same. We look at what's working and we sort of continue that. We look at what are the challenges and we try to address those. One of the things that we have had were multiple conversations, really thinking about the feedback that was given. I know, I want to thank our administrators who have clearly gone above and beyond. Last week or two weeks ago, I can't even remember when, there were multiple meetings. I think three or four different town halls, really sort of focused on the hybrid model, the digital learning model, our special ed families, really kind of getting their feedback. There's been multiple opportunities for students to give feedback, for families to give feedback. So we have a lot of data in front of us. I think we also want to thank Shannon, who shared with us a lot of information. And Shannon, maybe I can hand it over to you in a minute. But Shannon very graciously sent a report out to us as school committee to really talk about what are some of the successes, what are some of the challenges. One of the things when Shannon and I spoke, sort of in more depth, I had asked Shannon if she could kind of come up with points that we sort of know are causing teachers to feel overwhelmed or stressed. Things that were not specifically directed to teaching and learning, that perhaps we could consider options of how we could move those off of their plate, maybe delegate to somebody else. I want to be quite honest and share that Shannon sent us a nice list. And I think, Shannon, one of the things that we probably know is that we received your document with all of these great ideas. But they probably can be discussed, as you shared as well, through the Labor Management Committee. And really sort of, I think there was six or seven bullet points. I'm not really sure if I remember exactly. But those are definitely conversations that can happen. And I think as a district, that's what we always want to do, right? We always want to make sure that we have those open lines of communication and those conversations. So when we talk about kind of moving forward, keeping kind of this hybrid model in place for the time being, it doesn't mean that we're not going to continue to really develop new ideas that will continue to keep Norton as a leader in instruction. So that's always our goal, is to make sure that Norton is absolutely meeting the needs of all parties involved. So I think that it's important to know conversations are happening constantly and regularly. And we just want to make sure that we have all of the information as we continue to gather it. So Shannon, did you want to chime in? Is that okay if you did that now and kind of share a little bit about what we've discussed or what you've shared with us?
Thank you. I appreciate that. I thank you guys for, you know, always working with us. This has been a long road since March. I can't even count how many months it's been, to be quite honest, because it feels like six years in this short amount of time. But throughout this, you guys have always been willing to have conversations with us and come to the table and listen. And that has been, that has made this really difficult situation at least feel easier. So I thank you, School Committee, for that. Like everyone has noted, this is challenging, right? We're all new to this, and many staff have commented that they feel like first-year educators as they've been asked to kind of shift and flex constantly this year in ways, you know, we just haven't had to do before. Overwhelmingly, though, our staff will tell you the best part about being back this year is being with the kids and having them in front of us in any way that we can. And someone texted me when Malia had said when she was talking about JCS, apparently my face lit up. And it is, when you talk about being at school and you talk about being with the kids, like, I immediately go there and I think to myself, this is, that is what brings us joy. That's why we became educators. We want to, we want to educate. We want to enrich our students. So we really want nothing more than to return the way that everything was before, life, you know, school, everything. And we're doing our absolute best, but we are still worried about the future, especially with what happened today. Just with, you know, us moving into the red, even though, I mean, it's one of those things. We knew that these things could happen, and we're going to continue to work through it. But there's just so much uncertainty, and we're constantly rethinking and reimagining what we're doing and what our practices are. And it's definitely a stressor that is on educators' minds all the time. What next is going to come down the line? What more is going to happen? So we will continue to be flexible, as we have been. We're going to continue to try to meet the needs of our kids. I think some of the hard things for us too is that, you know, we have Desi, who is coming out. And they're saying things to us that are stoking the fires rather than helping us, right? Thinking of MCAS being a requirement this year. I don't think I have to say much more than that. It is, it is an absolute stressor to add this to educators' and students' plates when we have everything else going on. And it just seems like more and more they're not following the principles that I know that we really so strongly feel here in Norton is that we want to be sensitive to the social-emotional well-being of staff and students. This district has done an amazing job of prioritizing student safety and staff safety and safety of the community. I mean, we've worked really close with Wayla Zott, and our custodial unit has been phenomenal. Really has risen to the occasion and helped us make this work. So that has been really, really great as well. But as Dr. Bayetta had said, I think that our biggest concern at the end of this is the mental health and sustainability of kind of what we're doing right now. There have been a lot of successes. We've had, you know, like I said, everyone is really happy about being back and being able to see the students in the way we can. And he's right, we finally feel like we're gaining some momentum and we're in a groove. And we're moving forward, we're finding the positive things that are working, and we're able to integrate those a little bit easier. Having that time to plan with our colleagues has been monumental because we are planning more than we have ever planned before. We are reinventing our lessons. We are trying to come up with Project Place Learnings in all different ways. At times, it feels like you're doing two or three jobs. You're trying to do a lot. But people really do feel safe as possible in this model. And the global class sizes have really helped us get to know our students, which I highlight to you guys. It really is, has been a good way for us to get to know their needs and us be able to address them in a quicker way. Tech issues obviously have been a challenge. I don't think that is speaking at a turn in any way, shape, or form. We're all becoming more tech-savvy than we ever have. We're trying to help parents in the middle of the day too and help students problem solve. So that's something else that we're trying to work through. Some of us are worried about the sustainability of how much time kids are on screens and how, if that's developmentally appropriate. So that was something we did hear back from educators as well. And again, it's been a lot more time. It's a lot more time away from our families and trying to shift and trying to move constantly. And I think we know that Norton educators are always more than willing, and they've really risen to the occasion. I am, I am just in awe of the people working around me. But I just wanted to make sure that we continue the relationships that we have here, which have been so great. The Labor Management Committee is meeting weekly, and we're talking constantly throughout as well, trying to come up with ways that we can continue to make this better and improve. And again, I thank you guys for your trust in us and that, that we're able to kind of problem solve and bring solutions to the table, because that's what we're here to do.
And Shannon, just for the sake of, since the two of us basically leave that. The Labor Management Committee was in agreement between the Norton Teachers Association Executive Board and the Norton School Committee to take five professionals, paraprofessionals as well as teachers, and three administrators, myself, the Assistant Superintendent and Director of PPS, which originally was Jean, now has moved to Vinnie Cersei, and bring those eight people together to work. We've been meeting once a week and as much as twice a week since March. We skipped two weeks in the summertime for our own kind of just break. And we meet every Monday at 2:00 to discuss critical issues that need to be addressed or at least put them on the table and have the other side think about a better way to do it and how can we resolve it, and so on and so forth. So just for the public to know, that's very different from the political perspective of trying to create an educational model. It's been left to the educators, by both sides, if you will, to come up with the best solution with parent input. Because we know we had over 40 people originally involved in all of this. And as well as regular public meetings, and then also the School Committee, which is the governing body of the district. Thanks for that.
So yeah, I'll just kind of end with, we started the year off with three words, with flexibility, kindness, and forgiveness. And I think that is something that still resonates in what we're trying to do. And we appreciate you guys taking the time to be flexible and for parents too to understand that we're trying different things, we're flip-flopping, we're trying to say, is this the best way? You know, can we do a video this way? Do we do it that way? But we appreciate the overwhelmingly positive comments that we saw and the recognition that I know that you guys have for the educators of Norton, because they really have continued to go above and beyond. And I am just very, very proud of my colleagues right now and the students for being just absolutely amazing in this. You wouldn't even know some days that they're wearing masks all day. They're doing such a great job.
Shannon, if I could sort of comment a little bit, a couple of things that you said. One was Desi. I think we all know that they clearly are creating expectations that are perhaps not what we would necessarily agree with or support as a sort of public school district and as a school committee. I think we just have to kind of wait out and see what they're going to do. I know we have, here in Norton, we're really lucky to have a superintendent who leads in the right way and is not shy to kind of share his opinions. So we just kind of keep our fingers crossed in regards to some of the bigger decisions that are being made that we don't think necessarily support the overall well-being of our staff, of our students, MCAS being one of them. But I also think that probably if anybody has sat through an MCAS sort of report meeting that Mrs. O'Neill has given us, we don't always put a lot of stake into the MCAS results, right? I mean, we obviously use it as data and it's helpful and we appreciate it. But we don't necessarily always put a lot of stock in that, that sort of data point. So I think as a school committee, we are absolutely flexible with those kinds of things. And we're just going to have to wait out. You know, Desi also has rules and regulations and requirements on attendance, for example. They also have different requirements on whether we are, you know, based on kind of where we're at, what color we're in, where we're coded. Should we be hybrid? Should we be fully remote? And they are auditing school departments. Clearly, that has absolutely been something that Desi is doing. And although in some ways it feels like, from the federal government down to sort of the state kind of government now down to districts, it kind of initially felt like they were going to allow districts the opportunity to make decisions that were in their best sort of, kind of, based on their own districts, their own environments, what was best for them. I'm not sure that that's actually happening. Because districts did make a decision, and now they're being audited for those decisions. So I think as much as it feels like in some ways districts are being told to do what they think is best sort of for their community, I'm not sure that that's actually happening. So we have a lot of kind of requirements and demands from Desi that we have to at least consider as we are making decisions. The other thing that I wanted to share is something that you said, just about kind of knowing students. I think no other time have we seen kind of all of the differences of developmental theory, right? What we're seeing is that our younger students who are working kind of remotely maybe are doing it a little differently than our secondary students, right? So the question becomes, and I think that this is something, Shannon, that will be kind of a conversation through your Labor Management Committee, to really think about those things, you know? One thing that you and I have talked about are office hours, you know, how are they working? And the question is, is it different for our older kids and our younger kids, right, our younger students? So there's all these different bullet points that you shared with us that we absolutely want to sort of dive deeper in. And if I could just share one last thing, and then I'll open it up for other comments. We would love for people to offer us thoughts, to share with us when there are concerns, ways and ideas of how to do it differently, how to do it better. We are absolutely, I think, you know, people may disagree, but I think as a school committee and even as a sort of district, we are so receptive to ideas. We want to work together and be collaborative, and we want to make sure that we do continue to propel Norton to be the best it can be. You know, this is certainly a turning point in our sort of educational kind of landscape, and I think we want to have ideas. So if you do share an email, or you share a letter, or you have ideas, we would not be opposed to also sharing sort of next steps. We can't guarantee that they would be implemented for multiple reasons, but I think we would absolutely love to brainstorm and have those conversations. And I think that that's what we've been doing. Shannon's probably talked to each one of us at different points, right, on this School Committee. The other thing I just wanted to say, and Dr. Bayetta, you and I had had this conversation. There was some, I don't know if they call posts, some different sort of little messages that were coming up on social media about what other schools are doing, about maybe sort of transitioning from kind of a hybrid to a remote as the holidays approach and different things. So we just want to make sure that everybody knows that as a public school district, we are mandated by different sort of rules and regulations and that we can't simply change as maybe a school like the Bishop Fian can, that doesn't sort of have the same mandates or the same requirements. So please just kind of maybe be a little patient if a school is doing something that seems really great. We just want to make sure everybody knows that we do have sort of state mandates that we have to continue to follow even during a sort of global pandemic, so. With that being said, any other comments? Any comments from other School Committee members? Kathleen?
I'm assuming that we're not going to go over the data that we got, but I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that kind of hit me. It would be helpful to know, well, first of all, I'm really happy that in the student survey, in-person safety, so many kids felt safe. And that's really important to me because we know that the social-emotional development and everything is so out of control right now, that the kids feel safe at school is my number-one goal. And I'm glad to see that most of them feel that way. So that's number one. The other two things were, I don't know if we're calling them office hours or help hours. Most of the teachers didn't feel like kids were checking in for that. And also, the one where the parents answered that they have to help their kids. It would be more helpful to know, to break that down into age groups. I know I take care of my niece and nephew, and they need constant help. My nephew came to me the other day and said, I'm just going to have lunch because I can't find my class. I said, no, you're not doing that, and had to guide him how to get there. So are we talking that those kind of kids need help, like the younger grades? Or are we talking older grades need help because they can't? It would be helpful to know the breakdown of age of that. And the same thing with the office hours. We've got so many teachers that are sitting there, you know, ready to help and do extra help. And from what the survey said, they're not really getting utilized. So how do we, how do we look at that?
So a couple of different responses, Kathleen. I think the office hours, one is definitely one that we have to have some discussions in the Labor Management Group and have some real discussions about how the communication of that is taking place. I'm not sure that we've put together a good communication plan on behalf of the teachers and all of that, so that's one part. The other part is, is it useful for, more useful for older students, like you would see in the traditional high school model, if you were, where a kid goes in to ask his teacher or her teacher questions? And you typically don't see that at the elementary level. Elementary-level kids are getting on a bus right away and going home unless there's a special circumstance. So digging into that data a little bit by both sides, including the students, is a good idea. When it comes to the overarching responses, the hardest part about any survey is trying to take it to the next level, which is to maybe pilot, if you will, some new ideas around what we're currently doing via the appropriate process. But taking a look at what would be some of the next things we could do as a district to support some of the questions you just asked. So one of the long-term goals that I have is the potential, pending, of course, funding, which is the biggest issue. A, do we see any new funding during this school year that could enhance our approach? I.e., an extended school day on certain days for students that are following. i.e. an extended school day on certain days for students that are falling behind, any student, or an extended summer programming for students? So going beyond students who are required to have summer programming and really creating, if you will, a two or three-day-a-week, if you will, in-school session or even during February break or April break, if in fact those happen, because who knows what's gonna happen? Those are the type of ideas that we're working on. And right now, as you know, with a presidential election around the corner, there isn't gonna be any move in DC until we have, we know what's gonna happen there between the Senate, the House and the White House. So whatever those changes are, I think regardless of who gets in, there's gonna be changes that are financially potentially beneficial to states. I don't know if that will include traditional public education, but I think that's what everybody is telling them, that the funding source to try to play support and catch-up for any student's background is going to require more funding. You can't do catch-up with students by just doing a regular school day. They need more time on task in order to get better. The studies are very clear about that, that you need more time on task in order to be able to improve. So just a general response.
And if I could just say one more thing about the office hours too. I know that it seems like with the upper levels, maybe it makes more sense, right? Because the kids are more capable of taking care of themselves. They also are very capable of sending their own emails and that's what they're doing. They're sending a lot of emails to the teachers throughout the day. So then they're sending the email, "This is my question," the teachers are able to respond to the email. So it's a little bit of that as well at the upper because the kids are much more capable of, you know, when they have a question, they can directly email and reach out. So that's also a little bit of what I'm hearing. Again, I teach K to 3 special ed, so I'm speaking for those who are telling me kind of how they're handling it right now and that's really what they're doing with those 30 minutes is reaching out, answering those emails, they're doing it during their prep too, they're doing it during their lunch, they're doing it morning, noon and night. I really wish that some of my educators and my colleagues would just say, "Hey, it's four o'clock, I'm gonna shut down for the night and I'm gonna have some time with my family." But they really are, they are going above and beyond and doing a lot more of those hours anyways. So for the upper, I think that's a lot of what they are doing, is the kids are reaching out on their own, which is great self-advocacy skills. It's, they're learning a lot, we gotta give them that.
Oh, I'm glad to hear that because as an older student, it's almost like if they don't do it right away, it's, so I'm glad to hear that they're at least doing that.
And Kathleen, the one thing that Shannon and I talked in depth about the other day was really sort of the differences in kind of the ages and grades and that we recognize that this may not be a one fit, one kind of size fits all model. And I'm not sure that we're already, you know, we're not talking about making big changes or anything, but we're just talking about having the conversation, you know? What is working in kindergarten certainly may not even be working well in fifth grade, right? So that we really wanted to kind of break it down a little bit and kind of get a sense of that. And I think it also goes that the office hours was one of those kind of points that we were talking about in regards to that one-size-fits-all model may not just be working the way that we had thought it would, but how can we make it work better? So.
And I'm assuming that the office hours are open for parents as well that have questions that need help explaining something or are they student-based only?
It's totally 100% student-based.
Any other comments or questions? Sheri?
Carolyn, thanks. I just wanna say, I just wanna thank the teachers who have reached out either through email or to me personally, just with some thoughts, ideas, criticisms. You know, we need to hear from staff to know what's truly going on. We are not educators, so you know, we're not in the buildings with you guys, so it's really important to kind of hear where you guys are coming from. So I just wanna thank them for reaching out, taking the time to ask questions or whatever. And I also just wanna say, you know, we truly are trying to take everybody's emotional needs into account with decisions that we have to make. And sometimes it just, it doesn't work out the way that we hope. You know, I was told that one of our last votes that we took, that some of our teachers felt disrespected. And for that, and I'm only gonna speak for myself for the rest of this, for that, I am truly sorry. I really am. That's never, ever been my intention to make anybody feel disrespected in our district. So I apologize for that. As I said, we do have to keep everybody's well-being and it's hard, it's hard sitting in this chair. And so if you felt let down, I do, I apologize, but it was something that I truly felt was important for our students to have that equity. I had more I wanted to say, but now I can't, now I can't remember. I don't know, maybe it'll come back to me, but I did read all of these notes that were sent through student, through parent, through Shannon, everything that you and I talked about the other night, as well as what you emailed me. You know, it's nice to see some positive things. I definitely think there's some things that we can change that might be able to help our teachers. So hopefully going forward, we can really kind of do a deep dive on some of this stuff and see what we can take off their plate, what is working, what isn't working, and try to keep moving forward in this model that based on some of this feedback, everyone seems to be happy with. I mean, teachers that I do talk to, like Shannon said, they're so glad to be in front of their students. So I just, maybe we can do a deeper dive and really look at this stuff and see how we can help our teachers. I just, I do know that, you know, it's hard some days to get up and put a smile on your face. A lot of people are feeling that way right now. And so for myself, I just wanna thank our teachers for putting aside, it's just been a tough day, so I am shocking a little emotional. I wanna thank our teachers for putting all of their own stuff aside and putting that smile on their face every day for our students, for our kids. So thank you and I appreciate you and I just want you to know that I do hear you.
Sheri, I think you probably are echoing sort of what all of us kind of think and do. I mean, I think as a school committee, and if we could kind of go back to what Dr. Vayata said, it's that find balance, right? It's really finding that balance and the balance has been almost impossible to find. How do we support our students and how do we kind of make decisions that maybe are in the best interest of our students, but also support our staff at the same time and are in the best interest of our staff? And those are the struggles. And I do agree. I mean, none of the votes that we make are ever meant to be personal or to demonstrate any lack of disrespect to our staff because we know that's why Norton is the district that we are, is because we have staff that really care for our students and our children. So by no means are those votes ever meant to be taken as a personal kind of attack or something that we are not looking at the hard work that's happening. And I think Shannon and I had conversations about really trying to find that balance and how do we do it? I mean, let's face it, there has never been a time in history that has, that any of us have ever experienced that has been so difficult on so many different levels. And I think this was sort of step one, was for us to kind of do this six-week check-in, for us to really sort of have some data points. And I think Shannon put together a nice list for us to really sort of sit down and take a look at and see what can we do, what can we do better, what has been working. I think in these moments of crisis, I think we're really, just human nature allows us to really focus on the bad things and forget that there are good things. So there are some really great things happening, but we just wanna kind of address the things that aren't happening so well. And I think we will do that moving forward. I think we've been doing that right along, but I think we have some more specific data points that we will continue to focus on. So I think, you know, just to kind of go off of what you said, Sheri, as a school committee, the votes that we take are never meant to be disrespectful. We apologize if that's the way, or I apologize if that's the way that it's perceived, but it really is trying to find some form of a balance to kind of keep our kids in school and to keep them in front of our great teachers. So is there any other comments, Dinesh?
Yeah, so I have a couple of things I wanted to go through, but really quickly I'll just piggyback off of what you and Sheri said and say, you know, it's, we're all going through a pandemic. Everybody's life to some degree sucks worse than it did, you know, March 15th. And I don't say that as a way of an excuse, but more an explanation. You know, it's becoming more and more prevalent today that we're kind of forgetting our own humanity and we're forgetting our fellow man. And I know, and I'm talking about all of us, I'm not talking about a specific group, I'm talking about every single person in the world. And I know everybody out there is like, "Well, I'm not me, no, I'm not me, yeah, you," everyone, you know? And it's, I don't say this just to, again, to make an excuse. You know, quite honestly, the half-day thing, I'll take that on me. And I actually voted for the half-day, to be honest with you. But at the same time, I kind of thought, you know, yeah, this might be a little blowback from the teachers and I never really mentioned it and I should've. And so I kind of blindsided some of these guys. That's on me, you know, my bad. At the same time, again, you know, we kind of forget, we forget to think about other people. And this is not to say that we didn't think about you guys, we did in this case. The decision we made is the decision we had to make. It's the right decision, whether it suits everybody's needs or not, but unfortunately sometimes it just doesn't go your way, you know? But I bring up the humanity thing, not because, not because of necessarily just to tell people, "Hey, you know, you need to be nicer to the people," but also to remember that sometimes when people don't seem so nice to you, it's because they've got their own thing going on as well. So everybody kind of just keep that in mind, you know? Let's try and get back to where we were. You know, this is a really solid, great district with great relationships. I think we've always been on the right path. I don't wanna see us get off that path for small things. So, you know, to Sheri's point, I think we've historically been very pro-staff. I don't see that's changed at all in this pandemic. I think if anything, we'd double down on it. But again, if we forget to say thanks and forget to tell you how much you're appreciated, you know, don't think that's because you're not, just it's because we're, you know, pig headishly worried about our own stuff at that moment. So Shannon, you, the NTA, every staff member, trust me, we do appreciate what you do, we do see it, you know? And when you read through those comments that we got in that pamphlet, there's a ton of people who are saying, "Hey, you know what, teachers, great job, thank you, we appreciate it," you know? And I get it, there's some negative stuff in there too and quite honestly, when I went through it, I looked at it and said, "Okay," and this is not to be dismissive of the negative comments, but some of the negative comments, quite honestly, are just, "Hey, we're in a pandemic, that's what it is, that's what the complaint boils down to." It's not a complaint that you're not doing the right job, it's a complaint that this pandemic sucks and it's affecting everybody's life. We get it, you know? And I'm glad to read them and glad to let people vent, but you know, that kind of is what it is and there's not much we can do about that. So one thing I did wanna mention, and I wanna kind of bring it back away from the touchy-feely stuff, because quite honestly, that's not my forte, to be honest with you. Bring it back to the hybrid model and kind of where we're going with this. You know, I'd be honest with you, I actually would entertain the motion or, sorry, entertain the idea of going back to school full-time, back to a normal sense. I say that because I think that, you know, there's a lot of stressors on students and a lot of stressors on teachers right now, which would be alleviated by that. I understand that it would be an additional stressor for some teachers and some students. At the same time, you know, it's, while I think that that might be something we would wanna explore, I also realize that right now, unless D E S I has changed their regulation of three feet into suggestion of six, which Joe, I don't believe they have, right? Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
Yeah, so without that change, I don't see how it's feasible, quite frankly. So unfortunately, what I think might be something that would be a good idea and a good option to look at is just not a doable option. You know, so again, it's not that you don't wanna make this decision, it's just unfortunately the right decision right now, the one that we have to make is kind of under the guidelines of what D E S I says. And quite frankly, I think D E S I, I think, you know, not just D E S I, I'll say the government, and I don't mean that, I don't wanna sound like I'm from the tin hat crowd because I'm not, and I'm not anti-government, but there are a number of voices chirping at us from on high right now. And quite honestly, they're sending some really mixed messages. You know, they're auditing people who are remote, they're telling people, "You gotta be six feet apart if you can't afford it too, you know, too bad." And then, you know, the people who are, you know, in school, now we have, I'm not gonna name names, we have people saying, "Well, if you're, unless you're red with an outbreak in your school, you should be in school." I don't know what to think anymore, quite honestly, you know? It's becoming really irrational. But at the same time, I think this district has continued to be extremely rational, make good decisions, make decisions based on what we thought were data points and the best data points we have at that time. And while I've already had this discussion with Joe and said, you know, quite honestly, I don't, I don't see that the data that we've driven from this survey is necessarily very helpful because it's so broad-based and not focused, like for instance, Kathleen said on, you know, what grade are you in, you know, blah, blah, blah. These things matter, you know? A view from 35,000 feet, it's not too bad, it gives us a little sense. It seems like there's maybe a little too much work in some areas, particularly those Mondays, it seems like there's an issue with that. But, you know, it's something to build on and I think we can continue to drill down from here, but that's what we gotta do, you know? I think we're doing a great job, kudos to everybody, and I'm not just patting myself on the back saying we're doing a great job. I honestly feel it, and I feel like people have put in a lot of time and effort into this. And right now, given the parameters that we're operating under, this is, I hate to say this is the best we can do, but this is the best we can do. We're pretty damn good right now, quite frankly. Look at a lot of the districts, a lot of the districts are crap shows, if you pardon my French. They are struggling right now. You know, not to say that we're not struggling in our own ways, because we are, but we're handling our struggles and we're plowing through it, so good for all of you guys, appreciate it.
Can I just really quickly also say thank you to Karen Winsper in getting us to be a one-to-one district, because as much as there's been tech issues, wow, has that been a game changer for us to be able to have all this? And then also the addition that this you guys made to have Christina Schillingo become the digital, I'm not gonna get her title right, digital learning coach. She has been phenomenal, she has been a resource that we all have felt really comfortable with and has made this really tough time go better and all of the guys in the tech world that have been helping us. So thank you, Karen, and your amazing team that have made something that could be much more bumpy go well.
Thank you, Shannon, we do have a great team, but the one-to-one is not me, it is the school committee and it is the administrative team who have absolutely supported those.
So Madam Chair, through you, really the anticipation right now is, as we move forward, there's two pieces of, two timetables of you. One is the continuation and improving our model as we go forward. It's also continuing to look at our digital learning academy model and what's going on there and Marty Gagan, and who is the acting principal for that, doing kind of a split role, if you will, he's spending a lot of time on that, has also provided you some updates and some thoughts about how to continue to improve that. I also think, and I know he noted it, his support from Jen's office has been incredible to just try to handle that. And that has smoothed itself out in many ways as well, from what expectations were, how often did you meet with students and all of that. And that's still being worked through with certain groups. The other part that I think is important is as we continue, if you will, have another check-in, you know, in terms of maybe trying to help out with a little bit more diving in data, if you will, providing you, for example, the breakdown of a question by grade level, providing those types of things. And maybe even doing some testing pilot questions with some teachers and some parents that maybe can allow for us to dive in and doing it anonymously. The other part is we're in week one of data, it's a four-week process. It also has to include local data and information and what we're seeing in our schools, around our schools, connected to athletics, activities, staff. As you know, that is the one that is the most difficult to explain. You know, the moment we start to not have teachers in front of kids, I may have to make a critical decision, even if it's just for a week or for two days or for three days or whatever the case may be. And then lastly, the labor management committee will be finalizing any day now its actual remote learning agreement, if you will, and how that looks like and what that really means in terms of day-to-day schedules and expectations, because it will change again, right, from what we're doing to what we'll be doing somewhat. From what we're doing to what we'll be doing somewhat. And I don't really have a timetable. If you started, if you start counting next week and you go through the 23rd of December, it's 39 days of school. We could always go past Thanksgiving and cut it short before Christmas to take a look. Maybe that second week of, I should say, the holiday or Christmas break. Maybe that second week in December, next week's school committee meeting. I'm actually going to tell you that we should move it to the 12th because we really don't have a lot of topics for next week unless you really want to meet. And once we do that second check-in, if we're still in hybrid and all of that, that's still going on, if you will, it's another 39 days of school. So it's basically another, you know, X number of weeks that's available to us. It's a little choppy, by the way, because we have, we have next week, we have Tuesday off. The following week, we have Veterans Day off. And then a week and a half later, we have Thanksgiving, end of the week. So it's going to be a little choppier for the next few weeks. And Tuesday is a true day off. We have not treated that as a remote day or come-to-school day or anything. It's an off day for everybody. And same thing with the following week on Veterans Day.
Okay. Can I just ask another question of Joe? Joe, just in looking at through some of this information that we did receive and talking to some parents and some teachers, not just in Norton, but in other districts as well, is there any possibility of, you know, even listening to Kathleen talk about some of our younger students, how it's really difficult for them? I would imagine kids who can't read yet, this is extremely difficult, probably more so on the parents, trying to, you know, help them. Is there any way to look at trying to bring some of the younger kids back in school more? But is that too difficult because of the hybrid and having, you know, half of the kids there?
Well, you have a staffing issue. That'll be number one. Number two, how do you transport them? Because you, we would have to get more buses. Number three, where do they sit for lunch? These are all the big issues. Even as we're looking at bringing back high-need students right now, we have almost no possibility of doing it at the high school because of the space issues. So that's the number one issue. We have looked internally, a lot of discussions about half-day at the elementary level. Depending on who you talk to and where you work, whether they're having half-days, boy, oh, boy, it's kind of like a red state, blue state discussion. It's 50/50 split about loving it and not loving it. The biggest issue that I see is if you're going to quote, "blow up to six feet" and not follow CDC regulations, you're going to have to do it in every location that you have that. I just don't see how we can support that, especially since we just moved into red, especially because the cases are rising in under 30, especially for those two or three reasons. And again, that's just the data. I'm not suggesting anything, except we've been hearing the governor for a week and a half stop the parties. And most of those parties are happening in the high teenagers into 30. I'm very concerned about what's taking place this weekend. I made that pretty clear to everybody. And what that could lead to is an automatic uptick next week in week two. Now we get two weeks of data that we're looking at and the potential impact within the schools. We know what's happened with community activities, where we've seen results that directly impact us. So could we look at it? I guess we could. One of the concerns that I have is how you look at that is, I don't know how we can not follow rules for one group of kids, but follow for another. That's one. Two, we would probably see some significant staffing issues. I won't even say probably. I know we would. Because the concern and the issue has always been around the safety of students and staff. Hiring people right now is financially not a potential for us. But also, the other side of it is, who's out there to be hired? Is, you know, so there's 3,000 emergency waivers that have been filed by the state this year, which has never really happened at that level before. So we're, it's kind of like, you know, trying to clean during a half-day. I don't know how we would do that and do it at the level that we're doing it now. And I hate to be a Debbie Downer, but I will tell you right now that I know two districts in the area that just put in $500,000 worth of transportation. They're going to probably be making a move on these types of issues. I know one that is paying $45 per every student, once a week, and every staff member to be tested for COVID, just announced, at their cost. They're not going with TOPPS. They're not going with the state. They're doing it on their own. Going to cost them a million bucks for the rest of the year. They have the money. They have the support. I don't see it. I just don't see it happening.
I appreciate the answer. I just, it was just something that I just wasn't sure if we had the space in, like, let's say, our elementary schools to bring back a certain grade. It's just been asked of me, and I just wanted to bring it up to see, you know, what some of the possibilities were, that's all. So I appreciate that.
So one of the other things too, that as we look at the high-needs population first and we look at all students within that group, the other part then becomes, we're already starting to think about the next wave of students after the first of the year to look at. What's happening is the crunching of the six feet is becoming pretty significant from grade to grade and building to building. So I can walk in to a cohort at the, at X school and say, well, we could probably fit two more students in here. And, okay, well, we could do that. Now we have to come up with who's the students that go in there? And then do it, what I would always do is a two-week turnaround time to an actual safety where we say, okay, two weeks from now, if you have no positive cases in your family or with you, there's a potential you come back, which is the way that we want to do it with the group that we want to look at for the 16th of November.
Joe, when we had talked a couple of weeks ago, we had talked about districts that were doing kind of something similar to what Sheri was asking about. So I think Mashpee is doing something pretty unique. And Foxborough is doing something pretty unique. I'm not sure you thought maybe, I think we had talked about maybe getting some sort of feedback or data from them. Were you ever able to find out kind of what the take is on sort of those sort of unique?
Sure. I have anecdotal data. I don't have actual raw data. In talking to some of our staff members and staff that both work in Foxborough and or live in Foxborough, as an example, I got two different answers. It's very difficult because of our home lives to try to find who's taking care of my child when they come home at 11:30 or when they have to go to school later, who takes care of them in the morning, as one example. And they've done everything, as you know, because they financially are a pretty established district. They've done all the extras as well. But they've also run out of space as part of their program approach. So that's the biggest issue. I think the other issue is the community expectations. I mean, you take a look at some of the W schools, they're just running a million-dollar deficits left and right, and it's going to get taken care of. That's not where I work. You know, I have to keep this budget within reason unless there's some types of federal support. You know, we currently have replaced into the classroom over 20 teachers. We have 23 people out on FMLA or FCCRA. That's a pretty significant number, highest number in the region. That's a pretty significant number of people. Then we just got the idea that it would be better for us to bring those people back as remote teachers than to try to find independent contractors, if you will. Even though we still had to bring a couple of other people in, we hired them. They belong to us. They work for us. It's not an independent third party. So it's the HR issues that are daunting in this process that is not really seen to the public. The public sees, my kid goes to school X, Y, and Z days. They stay home A, B, C days. In the background, they don't see or recognize as a public that their child may be going to school, but they may have had, as I know one parent, and she might be on tonight, who clearly has articulated disappointment in a situation that took place in one of our schools because there wasn't a certified teacher in front of their child for weeks, even though we had been posting it since August. So these are the types of things that we're dealing with.
Understood. Is there any additional comments? I don't see any questions in the Q and A, Jen.
Really quickly, Karen?
Sure.
So actually, two things. First of all, Wade, can we give Joe some oil for that chair, please? Secondly, and we don't have to discuss this, Joe, and I apologize if you guys are already thinking about it, but there was actually a comment in the parent survey there, which I actually thought was a great idea. They were talking about the lower ages. They said, you know, can we break up the Monday so that it's not the first half of the day? And then the second half there, you know, is the PD. Give them a shorter time period early and a shorter time period later because they were having trouble staying in front of the screens for that long. I actually don't think that's a bad idea. So something to think about, again, we don't have to talk about it now, but just want to throw it out there.
It is being discussed. We have a delivery service model problem with it though. And, you know, I can explain that further and have Casey and...
It's not necessary. I just wanted to make sure that we were...
It is on the docket. We're also have, we've also had docket discussions so that the public knows about alternating the cohort, where Cohort One would be in Tuesday, Thursday, as they termfully now. But on Week One, they come in Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, which means Cohort Two would be home Monday as well as Tuesday and Thursday, but then reverse it the following week, so every other week. It's a transportation nightmare, is one of our concerns. But again, we continue to put things on the table and try to finagle how the best way it is. As you all know, I came from a vocational district years ago. I'm not opposed to secondary being week on, week off. I see tremendous benefits to that at the secondary level because of the ability for students to be out in the workplace, especially the older students. That's a model that's been seen all over the place. But it's not necessarily a model that really fits us currently. But we put it on the table for discussion.
So I think we're seeing no further discussion at this point. I wouldn't mind, Joe, having another check-in before, you know, sort of that, you had mentioned that maybe moving our school committee meeting to November 12th. That gives us a couple of weeks to have had at least initial conversations with your Labor Management Committee, just to kind of do a quick check-in where we're at. I don't know, do we need to set a formal date for another more significant review? Or is that something that we can just...
What I would do is I'd leave it on the 12th. There's some other topics potentially that we could bring up. If we're not ready on the 12th, because, you know, you've got to remember, all of these teachers are working every day, the administrators, and then we're trying to find time to go back on Google Docs and all that. And that's not an excuse. It's just process. It takes time. Then we could also do the week immediately after the Thanksgiving break, when we come back the week of the 30th. And we could always create a school committee meeting on that day, which would still be three weeks out from the Christmas break, two weeks and four days, and give us more data and more information.
I would suggest, actually, rather than a formal kind of drop-dead date for another check-in, it sounds like we're basically, we're doing almost like a continual check-in at this point.
Sure.
You guys are revising it, you know, we're talking about it. And unless we get specific data that changes, whether we go, you know, high-red or they change the regulations around distancing, et cetera, I think at this point, I don't know if we need a specific formal check-in because I think it's going to be a flex exam unless something materially changes in the meantime.
We could also, to your point, the Labor Management Committee under Shannon and myself could actually send a co-memo that's also not only shared with the committee, but publicized to the public with updates and changes that we're making, if you will. Could do that too.
I think at this point, it's just going to be something we discuss every meeting anyway, so.
Sure. All right, so then we'll just kind of plan to continue to have open discussion about that. So seeing no additional comments, questions, we will move on to our second reading and vote on the district's personnel travel policy during COVID-19.
Carolyn, before we move on, and Dan actually reminded me of something. When we originally set the six-week check-in date, did we set it with a vote to be taken to continue in hybrid? Or is it just a check-in?
It was just a check, I believe it's just a check-in.
I don't remember it being a vote, but that could be totally wrong. I just...
We should check that, just to make sure. We don't have to give it to my office, but we should check to make sure that we...
Okay. We'll look back. Thank you. So Dr. Byetta, district personnel travel policy?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. This is the second reading of the district personnel travel policy. This is not a request for me to check off that a person who works for us can travel. This is simply stating that the person recognizes that they are traveling into a state that's been labeled by the governor's office as requiring that they take a test upon returning or before returning preferred or upon returning. But preferred is, it's always before you leave the place and you come back three days. Preferred, within 72 hours is what it says. And it's a process. And there was a question earlier from one of our staff members. So just publicly to say, the same form is being shared with all families. So that you know, it'll be going out to families for, especially with the upcoming Thanksgiving break. So just wanted you to know, because this is an executive order of the Commonwealth, and all I'm doing is saying to everybody, you're mindful that if you do get caught, it is a $500 fine, according to the state of Massachusetts. So as these states move in, you probably have heard that Connecticut is now requiring Massachusetts residents concerned. So we're going to see this constantly changing over the next few months.
I just have one question on it, and I'm sorry because I missed the last meeting, so I'm sure you already went over it. But in the second paragraph, when it says, if you went to a lower-risk state as identified in the order and internationally, that just means if you went internationally to a lower-risk international spot?
Yeah, so it would be, for example, if Portugal is, of course, you know, I'm going to choose Portugal is low, you can go. If you're going to Turkey, it's red. You can't go. Just as two examples. Mr. Savassa was just an example, not picking on anybody.
Thank you.
You know Malia's Turkish too, right?
I would call her wonderful, nice, beautiful Turkish. You, on the other hand?
I'm just surprised he hasn't changed his name tonight.
I thought about it when that chair was squeaking.
Oh, it is the second reading, so you need a motion and a vote.
So is there any comments or questions?
I can vote, right?
Yep.
So seeing none, is there a motion to approve the district's personnel travel policy during COVID-19 as written?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Sheri?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And Carol Lindsay, yes. Election of voting delegate and alternate delegate to MASC Delegate Assembly, Dr. Byetta.
So every single year, you folks choose someone who represents you at the joint conference of superintendents and school committee members, which takes place usually, I think it's week after next.
Next week.
Yep. This year, of course, it's all virtual. So there's a recommendation to appoint Ms. Stern as the voting delegate and Ms. Gallagher as the alternative delegate to the delegate assembly, which is where they vote any recommendations on state legislature and/or their own bylaws and practice.
My only question is, I still haven't gotten the booklet even saying what the declarations are.
You're correct. We haven't either.
Okay.
So this requires a vote?
Yes.
Okay.
A motion and a vote.
Okay. Is there a motion to elect Kathleen as delegate, myself as alternative delegate to the Mass School Committee Association Assembly?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Sheri?
Sorry, did you hear me? Yes.
Oh, sorry. No, thank you. Dan?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And Carol Lindsay, yes. Thanks for doing that, Kathleen.
No problem, but just so you know, I'll send you a link. There was, I'm assuming that maybe that's when they're going to tell us what the votes are and then maybe we can send it real quick because we're not going to have a meeting between now and when it happens.
Exactly. That probably will be our best option, so we'll keep in touch. So the FY '21 financial update, Matt?
Yes, so the packet that we put together for you, we made a small change to it. The cover sheet now has the appropriation balance right at the top of the page. Then it goes into the revolving accounts and the grant accounts. So there's a single page. You can look at it, digest all the information. And we still have the backup that goes with it. But for those who just want to look at the bottom-line numbers, you can walk through it that way. Right now, the balance current... Right now, the balance current that we have on the appropriations is not quite where we'd like it to be. We would usually have a higher balance than that, but with COVID, we do have some additional expenditures that are in there. We're going to keep an eye on this. I think we have a lot of our bigger expenses already encumbered, so we're already planned for the forward expenditures, and we'll just keep a real close eye on what's actually in there. The biggest driver that's kind of driving this down is the unplanned staffing, mostly through the long-term subsidies. That's really the largest over-studied number that we're looking at.
Thanks, Matt, for putting this together. It's really helpful to kind of see where we're at. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Just so that you know, this is the information that you received, and then it's just duplicated and sent to the Chair of the Finance Committee and.
Great.
Elections, so that they can have it at the end of every month, as we said we would do.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you for sort of staying connected with them, Matt, that's really helpful.
Happy to do it.
So, and we are going to move on. Dr. Vayetta, any other business?
Just a move to meet on the 12th of November and not on the 5th of November, if I could have that as a motion, so that we could establish that and move it.
Okay. So moved. Second? All in favor to move the school committee meeting from November 5th to November 12? Let's see, Sheri?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Nothing else, Madam Chair, thank you.
Just one question, so all of the things that we have in this binder, that's just to read through and make sure they're okay, we don't have to do anything else?
Yes.
We don't have to sign this and return it?
Right, yep, and then we'll take all the graphs and stuff and put those on our website as part of just presentation and information.
Great.
I think Kathleen might be talking about the minutes. Are you talking about the minutes, Kathleen, or the data?
Oh, the minutes, yeah, the minutes, the minutes the process was, because we fell behind so much and there are so many, the idea was to give them to the committee, which we always do, if there's any changes, make those changes and send them to Terry. Terry would make the changes within it, and then we would grab all five of you or three of you and have a quick meeting to go through the minutes. That was the idea, but we can always put them on for the meeting of the 12th and just make that one of the two core things that we'll do that evening. One of the things I want to get back to, so that you know, is I want us to get back to school committee meetings that I always thought were, had some fun in them, and that is teachers and kids, right, teachers and students. So I'm hoping that we can stop planning that for November and December's meetings, where we have a curriculum instruction, technology, best practices check-in, so that we can show at a high school level or an elementary level, some of the things that are taking place in our schools.
I agree, and Joe, I wouldn't be opposed to just adding those on to our agenda for the 12th. Is anybody else opposed to that?
Well, you're going to have to, because there are no three of us that were at all the meetings, so, because I actually went through and checked, like, who was at what meeting, so we can put them in a block, and it's going to have to be all five of us, because there are multiple meetings where two people are out, and there are different people on meetings, so.
So if you could just put that on the agenda, that would be great.
Carolyn, can we just talk about the rest of the meetings for November? So now we have one November 12, and we had one scheduled for the 19th.
Yeah, we'll probably keep those back-to-back right now. Again, on the 12th, if we see that we don't need the 19th, I'm happy to postpone it for you, but we're going to also be entering, like I said earlier, trying to get some other things done before the holiday season comes, so if you don't mind.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure.
So before we leave, if I could just sort of, once again, reiterate a formal thank you to all of our members of Norton Public Schools. So we absolutely, as a school committee, know how hard everybody is working and we truly appreciate it. I think that no other time have we appreciated our team that we do right now. So on behalf of myself, and I hope that the school committee won't mind if I say I'm speaking on behalf of them as well, thank you for all of your hard work. We really do know how difficult this has been, and we appreciate it, so.
Thank you, and thank you for the team for showing up tonight. I really appreciate you guys taking time away from your families to be with us tonight.
Thank you.
Carolyn, I just had one thing.
Yeah, for sure, Dan.
So I just want to give a shout-out to our Global Studies team, that consists of Ms. Tanelli, Ms. Moni, and Dr. Kiefer. We had a meeting last night regarding a lot of our student tours that have been canceled or otherwise may not happen. There is some disappointment, obviously, for some of those kiddos and some of the staff that will be attending, you know, but the work that they did, they tried to answer all the questions, you know, we're kind of at the mercy of the tour group or the tour company, and I just wanted to make sure, you know, I did attend as a parent, not as a school committee member, because one of my kids was going to attend. Obviously, that child is disappointed, but, you know, they've done great work, so I wanted to make sure, you know, we do vote on a lot of these. I myself look forward to hearing about these tours when the kids get back, so, you know, we're all kind of disappointed that they don't get to go, but I wanted to make sure that that team did get some recognition, you know, for the work that they did put into these tours and trying to develop that program.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. I think it's just a really hard year. I think we were so consumed last spring for our kind of current seniors in the spring, you know, as a parent of a graduating senior in the spring who went off to college in the midst of COVID, so kind of had it on the sort of end of high school, the beginning of college, there's been nothing that has been at all normal about the process. I think we have a lot of empathy for our, you know, current seniors as well, because it sounds like they're having another tumultuous year. Mr. Hayward, your daughter's so cute. So we totally, you know, we feel for all of the students who are kind of challenged by so many changes, so we continue to thank our staff for really understanding that there's a lot of students who are really disappointed, whether it's sort of Global Studies and a trip abroad, or it's a student who isn't going to be able to play their sport for the season, students who are trying to figure out college admissions and applications. There's so many stressors, so thanks to everyone who's really helping, we're all trying to help each other, I guess. With that being said, seeing no comments, I wanted to just say hello to Mrs. Welch, thanks for joining us. We definitely will see everybody on November 12, so thanks, have a nice night, enjoy your weekend.
Motion two, none?
Oh, I forgot about that, sorry. Is there a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting of October 29?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor. Sheri?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
None of the yeses.
Thank you all very much.
Bye, everyone, thanks.
Good evening. Everybody's night, everyone.